Good evening. Our April 26, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Mr. Grant Woods. Grant is a preschool student at the Trinity School of Texas, the son of Dr. Quentin and Julie Woods, and brother to Elle and Bren Woods. Please rise.
Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for our beautiful city. Thank you for our leaders. Thank you for Dr. Andy. Please bless us and keep us safe. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. We sure do appreciate you coming to say our prayer and pledge. Isn't that a great way to start a meeting off? I have actually asked with Dietrich Johnson that, and put it on our Facebook page, that we would like to get young people involved with our prayer and pledge for our city council meetings. And so I've asked young people to please contact us through Dietrich to schedule themselves to come up and say their prayer and pledge. I think it's wonderful that they will, that these young people will do this, and I know it brings a lot of joy to all of us to see that happen. So I appreciate Mr. Grant coming up and being our first one, and we look forward to seeing many, many more in the future. Tonight, in our employee recognition, I'm going to recognize the Longview Police Records and Properties Division. The Longview Police Records and Property Section is functioned as the administrative head, heart of our department. Their focus is to provide records, retention, and evidence preservation in accordance with federal, state, and local law, which is crucial for prosecution. The record specialists handle all public information inquiries and are also responsible for reporting crime statistics to the state and FBI, excuse me, for national reports. The property technicians are responsible for the daily intake, care, and custody of over forty-five thousand pieces of physical evidence. They maintain chain of custody from initial process to disposition after the evidentiary value has expired. These civilian positions are highly dedicated and bear a great responsibility for the Longview Police Department in maintaining all reports and evidence so they can be easily retrieved for public requests, court hearings, or other law enforcement purposes. These sections work hand in hand to provide the highest quality service to our citizens as well as federal, state, and local agencies. Tonight, we have Records and Property Supervisor Heidi Nance, Senior Record Specialist Patricia Venters, Senior Record Specialist Dana Burt, Record Specialist Amanda Pendleton, Record Specialist Elle Knapp, Property Specialist Elizabeth Ridgeway, and Property Specialist Melissa Dobbs. Please come forward. No guys, all girls. Why? Okay, girls are smarter than guys, I know. These ladies do such a great job for our community because without what you all do, our, our ability to record, prosecute, take care of criminal activity in our community would be inefficient. We wouldn't be able to do it. And so your dedication, your service to our community, even though no one ever knows it, if you, if we didn't have you all, we would, we would not be able to do what we do. And I know our police department, and I know Chief Bishop really appreciates you all, and I know we do as well as with the court systems, because evidence is everything, and preservation of evidence is key to any court case. And without that, the criminals get to walk free, and you all prevent that from happening. And so we really appreciate what you do for our community. You all are special to us and special to the community. And so thank you very much for your service and for the dedication you give to our community. We, Longview, we say, we say thank you. Appreciate you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Come on to the council. Thank you all very much. Appreciate y'all's service. I'm not sure if I see her here. I may wait on this just for a few minutes. Okay, so I'm going to come back to that. Mr. Finley, we can do that, can't we? Can I come back to that? Thank you, sir. Okay. Citizen comment. I have no citizen comment cards. Would anyone care to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. We are to public safety update. Oh, no, 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 no. Have a proclamation. Please forgive me. This is a proclamation regarding sexual assault awareness and prevention day. I know there's some people in the, in the crowd present. Please come forward. I think Kristy Copeland. Kristy? Come on up. How are you all? Thank you all so much for being here. This is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Day, April 26, 2018. Whereas the Women's Center of Sex has requested the mayor by proclamation to recognize April 26, 2018 as a Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Day in the City of Longview, where a sexual assault awareness prevention calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts men, women, and children of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds in this community. So therefore, I, Andy Mack, with the power of destiny as the mayor of the City of Longview, proclaim April 26, 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Day in Longview. Thank you all very much. And I, and I really appreciate you all bringing this to the forefront, because this is, this is something which we don't want to talk about. And if we don't talk about things, they don't exist. When we talk about them, they exist. When they exist, we can solve them. When we solve them, we all become better. So thank you all for being out there, for putting this out there to the public, for doing what you do, because this is how we solve problems in our community. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're all awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yes, absolutely. Thank you all very much. Okay. Public Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds. Mayor, thank you for taking the time to recognize our, our records ladies and, and property ladies that work in the property room. They do a tremendous job and have, have a big task on their hand managing all those records and pieces of property. So thank you for recognizing them tonight. This, this quarter, we also had an opportunity to recognize our, our tenured employees and provide them with a certificate of tenure awards. This, this quarter, we got to recognize Officer Durr for five years of service, Lieutenant Bettis for fifteen years, Officer Delgado for ten years, Officer Kason for ten years, Detective Burke for ten years of service, Officer Gonzalez for ten years of service, Officer Gibson for ten years of service, Officer Harkins for five, Officer Benny Cooks for ten years of service, and our telecommunications operator Casey Lawson for fifteen years of service. So want to congratulate them on their, on their tenure awards and look forward to them serving for many more years. I'd also like to give a shout out to the Junior League of Longview. Every year, they sponsor a dinner for first responders. They did that again this year. It was very giving, very thankful for that support, that they took the opportunity to take a night and recognize the first responders. And I know the, the fire chief's not here tonight, but he would echo the same thing, and we certainly do appreciate the time and effort that they, that they put forward to do that. This past week, we had an opportunity to visit with some judges from the Ukraine that came over with a delegation to learn more about our judicial system over here and how it operates. We had the opportunity to talk to them about some of the technology that we specifically use within the criminal justice system, within the police department, and within the courts, and how it all ties in together to the bigger information technology picture. Of course, we know they're in the process of, of trying to become a democratized society, and this delegation here has to go back and implement a information technology program for their whole country. So they have quite a task. One of the judges was a Supreme Court judge that was here, so we had an opportunity to share what we do here. We also almost created an international incident when one of the judges got in the backseat of the patrol car and, and couldn't get out. But they really, really liked the equipment that we had, and, you know, spending time with them and sharing our information with them really makes us thankful for what we have here in this country and the way that our, our judicial system operates and all of that. So it was a good time and a good learning experience for us, too. Had fun doing that. Like to remind everybody about the upcoming Giants of Law Enforcement, a tribute to the law enforcement agencies of Gregg County. It'll be May fifteenth. Tickets are now on sale. If they'd like to purchase tickets, they're fifteen dollars. You can contact Karen Grisham at the police department or call her at two three seven eleven hundred, and we can get, get, get some tickets out. Back a couple of months ago, a couple of officers come to me and pitched a program to me where they wanted to start a program on social media where we could highlight individual officers within the department from a different perspective than that of being a police officer. So we've been working with the city's media development team in creating some different videos that we're going to be putting out over social media, also be able to use these as record recruiting tools to recruit new officers. And we're getting ready to debut our first video. They wanted to do it last week. I said, wait a minute, give me, give me a week. So I want to share it with you tonight here for the first time.
I was born and raised in Texas. I've lived in the East Texas area for over fifteen years. I love this area. I love being a Texan and love being a citizen of Longview. Been married for eleven and a half years. Have three boys. Just, they're my whole world. They, they keep me busy. If it's not at home, spending family time together, like we were out in the woods, getting them, starting hunting, shooting BB guns. I like to run, so I'll take them out, trying to teach my six-year-old to get out and run. He can run probably about a mile on his own now. They take pride in what I do. They really, they believe in what I do. They know that it's a calling. It's just not a job to get a paycheck. My four-year-old wakes up to me every morning at five in the morning and walks in and helps me put my uniform on, hands, hands me my tools, and helps me put my, put my, put my gear on, and always asks me questions about my day. I'm a father of three wonderful boys. I'm their mentor and their protector, their friend. I'm a husband. I'm a son. I'm a brother. I'm a citizen of Longview. My name is Drew Allison. I'm a Longview police officer, a member of the Longview SWAT team, and I'm proud to serve and protect the citizens of Longview.
So, you know, I'm very fortunate, very humbled to be able to stand here and showcase our officers. And of course, this, this program here will be referred to or titled Outside the Badge, kind of give a glimpse of, of the officers and the things that they do outside of their work here as well. So, very good. And I want to thank the media development team for working with us. This took quite a while to develop, and we'll have some more to come in the future.
Any questions for Chief Bishop? Chief, I just want to say, what a, what a great idea that was to, to do that, to showcase our officers. I think that's fantastic, because that's what we're trying to do with our, you know, our employee recognition. You make, you make them more real, and it makes it easier for us to relate to them. And that's all what our community policing is all about, is knowing your officers, knowing about them, knowing who they are. It brings more realism to what we're doing. So I appreciate that effort, and I appreciate the guys and ladies being, willing to volunteer, and let's keep that up. That's good work for City of Longview. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. We are now to consent agenda. Any honest counsel might pull it off for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
I'd like to pull F off.
Pull F?
I want to E. I want to ask about E.
Okay. You want to ask about it, or you want to pull it off for separate discussion?
I just pull it off to ask.
Okay. Then we'll pull E and F off, and we will, is there a motion for?
Move to approve the remain.
All in, second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number E. Who's asking the question on E? Steve?
Last year, we, we contracted a company to do the mowing services here. Are we changing companies, or is this a different setup of mowing for some of the city properties?
We had rebid the mowing contract, and so this is actually a change order. We've been using this contract. There have been a few areas over time, medians, new places that have been added to the cities. And with the, about three new places or four new places, as well as the green, it pushed it over the threshold that we could just extend the mowing services to those expanded properties. So this is really just getting your permission to adjust that contract price to be able to take care of the areas we're supposed to take care of.
So is the other company still involved in the city, or not?
Not in this particular service.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right. All I need to?
Okay. Is there a motion now?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number F. Mr. Wright.
Mr. Finley.
Yes, sir.
I understand that really there's nothing that we can do about this, and I don't know if there's anybody here tonight from Center Point. Is, I guess not. Will there be when we vote on this, or when we approve it after it's been looked over?
All we can do with, this is a GRIP filing, so the, the Supreme Court of Texas has ruled that we have no original jurisdiction, so we can't affect the rate. The only thing that we can do is delay the implementation of the rate for forty-five days, and that's what this resolution does.
Well, I just wanted to ask anybody from Center Point, why after they made, from their annual, their financial statement, that they made a billion and a half dollars last year, why they need another price increase? And when Atmos is decreasing prices, it just seems like it's, when's enough enough? But I know you don't have those answers, so anyway, I appreciate your time.
But what this does is this, this is all we can do to delay, correct?
I understand that.
Yeah, right, right. I see what you're saying.
We, we can do a cursory review of the?
That's all we can do. Right. The Supreme Court is saying that out of our hands.
Absolutely.
Correct. Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And thank you all for, for asking the questions about that. I always appreciate when you have a question about a consent agenda, because we don't always, it's not just a rubber stamp. When you have a question, we want to discuss it and move forward. So thank you very much. Action item, consider resolution order and contract the amount of two million to Iron Horse Unlimited. Mr. McPhee.
Mayor, City Council, tonight we have a resolution to approve the contract in the amount of two million seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents to Iron Horse Unlimited, and also approve a deductive change order in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars, which will result in the contract price of one million five hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-five cents for the construction of the Longview Arboretum. The bids were opened. We had two bids on March twenty-eighth. Iron Horse Unlimited was the low bidder. After that, that was a little in excess of the anticipated cost, so staff in conjunction with the Longview Arboretum, as well as the contractor, met at the table and discussed ways to get the project within a budget that we could pursue with the construction. So I think everybody worked together and got approval of this, these items to move forward with the adjusted contract price. The funding, I think this is the true definition of what we've always talked about quite frequently of a public-private partnership. They're listed in order of funding. They have given the city a guarantee of one million one hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Two hundred thousand is from Texas Parks and Wildlife, a hundred thousand dollar contribution from Longview Economic Development Corporation, fifty thousand from the City of Longview, and twenty thousand from the Sabine River Authority. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any question, Mr. McPhee?
So all these sources of funds are guaranteed? We're not going to be left having to pay for those?
That is correct.
Okay.
And on that note, I want to, I know some of the Arboretum board members are here, and I want to just tell you how much we appreciate you all doing what you said you would do. And we're doing what we said we would do. We're going to, we're going to back this project and move this thing forward, and this is a good thing for Longview, and I appreciate y'all's tenacity and your build, a willingness to work, rolling you as well with the contractor, to, to make it happen. You know, these sometimes take baby steps, but you know, the more baby steps we take, the bigger the steps are going to be when it's all said and done. So I think this is a really good start, and I'm glad to see us moving forward the way that we are. So I appreciate the efforts put in by all parties involved with this, with this scenario. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Consider ordinance amending this. Clap, clap if you want to. It's a good thing. It's okay. We, we appreciate that. Consider ordinance amending the budget for City of Longview for the Texas fiscal year. Ms. Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Bonds. As the mayor just mentioned, I'm here to ask you all to amend the budget by giving the health plan one point five million dollars from the various fund balances throughout the city to help mitigate the rising healthcare costs, claims expenses, that our health plan is experiencing this year. As you all know, the city council delegated authority to a group known as the Health Board of Trustees back in nineteen eighty-seven to manage the self-funded health plan. Due to rising healthcare costs nationwide, about two years ago, the Health Board of Trustees hired a consulting group to help us manage our plan costs. Brent Uiger with IPS Advisors is here tonight to explain to you all why we are coming to you and asking for this budget amendment, to tell you the decisions that the Board of Trustees made just this afternoon to help mitigate plan costs this year, and then to explain to you some of the decisions that the Board of Trustees will have in front of us to make plan design changes October first. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Uiger, and I'll be available if you guys have any questions after he's done.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel, Mayor. Today, again, I would like to go over what is going on within the health plan, why are we, why are we requesting this budget amendment, the particular items that we're, again, looking at to potentially change ten-one of two thousand and eighteen to make the plan more efficient, as well as develop more consumative elements within the plan to control cost over the long term. I first wanted to start off by looking at the per capita claims costs that have been experienced over the past five years. The per capita claims are taking the total claims that have been paid out by the city and dividing it by the number of employees that are in the plan. There's a little over nine hundred and fifty employees currently covered by the plan. You'll see in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we were at six thousand six hundred and forty-three per capita. This year, we're at nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars per capita, a pretty large increase. Actually, last year, we had a decrease in our per capita health spend. We were seeing reductions in the overall trend rate. We used the last twenty-four months of claims experience to predict what was going to happen in the future. Unfortunately, this year, we've seen a, a rash of large claims costs that are overall affecting the city's health plan. There's really three trend drivers that we wanted to discuss today. One was runout claims from the prior administrator, Fringe Benefits. Ten-one of two thousand seventeen, we moved from Fringe to UMR, who has United Healthcare. Well, when we moved, we expected about nine hundred thousand dollars of claims that were incurred under Fringe but paid in the next fiscal year to come through. That, that money was about one point three million. So there were some claims in the system that were unexpected that got paid at a later date. The largest piece of the, the trend increase has been the catastrophic claims. Last year, catastrophic claims over fifty thousand dollars made up about thirty percent of your overall healthcare cost. Year-to-date, through the first six months, it's making up over fifty percent of your healthcare cost. So there's unexpected large claims that have hit the plan. This year alone, we've had five that have exceeded a hundred thousand dollars, one that exceeded five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was, weren't on the plan last year. So that's obviously had a big impact on our, on our claims cost. And then lastly, the emergency room utilization has also continued to increase. This is not a one-year trend. This is actually over multiple years. And so today, we'll talk a little bit about some strategies that we have approved to better control that ER utilization. But overall, the city's funding on an annualized basis is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to ER spend. That's about forty percent over and above the national average and is growing pretty substantially. So that's something else we've been keeping track of to try to control over the short and the long term. So I wanted to talk about a few of the items that the Board of Trustees is evaluating for this ten-one two thousand eighteen renewal process to better control claims cost, short and long term. One is the implementation of a health savings account. You've probably heard or seen these accounts within your own insurance plans. It's something that the city has not implemented in the past, but approximately forty percent of public entities and fifty percent of private entities have one of these accounts in place. And what they're designed to do is help employees save for future healthcare costs on a tax-preferred basis and get them more in, in line to have a, have a more, a bigger piece of the healthcare cost upfront, but they are saving for that based on a tax-preferred account. So what the health savings account does is combines a high deductible health plan with the tax-advantaged account. The high deductible health plan saves premium dollars for not only the city, but also the employee. And the city, city and employee can put money into these, into the health savings account on a tax-preferred basis for deductible expenses. And so because the deductible under, under a high deductible health plan applies to all services except for wellness, the employee really has, understands what the cost of healthcare is. So they understand that going to an emergency room costs seven hundred dollars per visit versus a primary care physician, which averages about a hundred and twenty, versus a primary, versus a, it could be a telephonic medicine visit, which is forty-five dollars. They're spending your, their money and your money more wisely in those situations. And again, any money put into this account is tax-preferred. If it's placed in there by, by the employee on a payroll-deducted basis, no taxes apply. It can roll over year-to-year, any unused funds, and that's all tax-preferred and can be utilized for medical expenses, tax-preferred as well. So that can be a pretty substantial amount of savings to an employee by putting money into that account. And as I said before, the HSA is designed to incent individuals to be greater consumers of healthcare and obtain savings from doing so. Because they have that larger deductible expense on a medical and prescription drugs, they're going to utilize, typically utilize those funds more efficiently than just having low copays, for, for example, for expenses. We are also looking at more tighter controls on prescription drug program. Today, the prescription drug program is very loosely managed. There's no step therapy program in place, no prior authorization program in place, no quantity limit program in place, which are pretty important to, to make sure drugs are being utilized most efficiently and effectively. These types of programs are on ninety-nine percent of fully insured accounts that are out there and over ninety percent of self-funded accounts. And they're, again, each have, has their own separate function, but they're designed to make sure employees are getting the right drug at the right time, the right quantity, and at the right, right cost. Without having these sorts of items in place, you can, you see higher drug spend, which the city definitely has compared to national norms. We're also looking, again, at emergency room usage much close, much more closely. Over two hundred ninety-two thousand of claims spend occurred in the emergency room for the first five months of the fiscal year. Fifty-six percent of that was for non-emergencies purposes. And so what we met today as the board and approved is we are going to eliminate coverage for non-emergency use of the emergency room. So that, that's a big step out of what you've done in the past, but it's very important that those emergency rooms are utilized for emergency room visits. The average cost to employees for a non-emergency room visit's about seven hundred dollars. It's extremely expensive to the employee. On top of that, to the employer, it's over a thousand dollars. On top of that, to the employer, it's over $1,000. So it's a significant expense to the city today, and we're designing this program to curb that. Also, we are going to put into supplement the program a telemedicine service that provides employees 24/7 access to a board-certified primary care physician. That telemedicine service, it would cost the employee $45 for that visit. And again, they're available 24/7, 365 days a year to help with those non-emergency situations. And again, you see the teledoc visit of 45 versus 713 for the non-emergency room visit. We're also recommending looking at a health claims independent eligibility audit. Audits of self-insured plans usually happen every three years, and one has not happened before at the City of Longview. So we're going to be implementing an audit on claims as well as eligibility to make sure that claims are being paid accurately, timely, and for eligible individuals as well. So that eligibility audit will be on dependents and spouses to make sure they're actually eligible for your plan. What you find without audits is that some spouses, divorced spouses, non-eligible dependents are on the plan that shouldn't be on the plan and can be incurring some significant cost. So that's something we'll be looking closely at. And then lastly, we're wanting to put an enhanced focus on health and wellness. Last year, the employee population, less than 35% of them had an annual physical. Of the dependent population, it was about 40%. We want that as high as possible to try to catch issues early and not when they are too late and expensive claims. So we'll be looking at potential incentives, premium differentials for employees who choose to take action about their health and wellness and get an annual physical or be tobacco-free. We'll be looking at those sorts of programs moving forward, incentives around that to try to protect the plan in the long term for potential healthcare expenses down the So that was just a quick 10,000-foot view of what we've been discussing with the committee, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Uyghur?
The HSA account is tax-deductible. Is that more or less like being self-employed or having your own, having, what happens to that money when they retire from the city? Does that money still stay in the city's coffers, or does it go back to those folks?
It goes to those folks. So it really acts like an IRA at the end of the day. You put money aside. Once you get a certain amount in that account, you can actually invest it in mutual funds.
But it's tax-deductible over until they take it out, right?
So if they take it out after retirement, Medicare retirement, they can take it out, and there will be no penalties as long as it's used for medical expenses. If an employee chose before retirement to take that out, to buy something that's not medical in nature, there would be an excise tax of 20% in addition to the, so there's some protections to the city on that side to try to make sure that the employee is utilizing for medical expenses.
So what is this committee going to consider, a non-emergency and an emergency situation?
Right. So what Texas law defines as emergency situation is a prudent layperson, what a prudent layperson would consider is an emergency. And under that, it's pretty broad in terms of what that emergency is. So it's really talking about what is truly not an emergency. And when you're looking at a non-emergency use, typically, we would see if an employee went into the emergency room for a wellness visit, or went into the emergency room to have a prescription drug refilled, those sorts of things that could reasonably have been sent to a primary care physician at the time of service for that claim.
And it would be the committee that would determine whether...
The committee's not determining what is. It's United Healthcare. It's based on the coding from the emergency room that's sent in with the claim.
Would employee have the ability to contest that determination?
They can attest it if it were to come back not in their favor, and if they showed supporting documentation and went through that process, it could be appealed.
Okay. Then my other question, I think, is probably for Mary Ann. I'm sure you have a plan in place about notifying employees of that change, because it sounds like that was voted on, so that starts now. That's not future.
It starts June 1st. So there's some time. So we're gonna be releasing a communication. We're gonna try to get it done by tomorrow. It might be Monday, but we're gonna get it out pretty soon so that employees have time to prepare.
Okay. And I think, I mean, I just would hate to have an employee who's done that in the past, used it for a non-emergency use, go back and then be surprised about the policy. So I feel like we need to do more than just an email to everybody in the city, but somehow make sure that that is not a surprise.
So how would this tell Dr. Burke?
It's awesome.
You get from close all the time.
It's good.
Yeah.
So, for example, if you were to call into the telemedicine service, they will triage you immediately, make sure that what you're needing is not an emergency room-related situation. You know, if there's something seriously wrong, they'll direct you to the emergency room. If it's something they can treat, based upon that triage, they will treat it. And so, for example, if you had pink eye, for example, there is a, on your smartphone, you can use that. You call in, and you can actually video conference or video chat, take a picture of your eye, send it over to the primary care physician on the other end of the line. They know exactly what it is. They can write you a script to go to a 24-hour pharmacy, and you can get that script for your...
Using your health savings.
Patients do it all the time. It's so easy. With phones these days, people snap stuff. They send it to us all the time. And it saves them having to come in for something that otherwise, you know, you can't get a prescription unless you see, go to an emergency room or see a physician or someone. And so this is a way to eliminate that emergency room visit for something that's simple, that doesn't require emergent care. So it's a very, very unique way to practice medicine, and it's much more cost-effective for the patients.
So what we're trying to do is put more of a burden on the employees by making them pay more of the cost to try to stymie them from going to the emergency room or frivolously going to places.
No, because right now, they don't have a choice but to go to the emergency room because there's no teledoc in place to do that. So when someone gets sick or they have an ailment, they have no choice but to either go to the emergency room or go to their physician. So that's the only choice they have, but that's a very expensive choice they're making that the city's having to pay for, because there's no other option. So this is giving them another option. There are still, it's gonna be times they have to go to the emergency room because there are emergent situations.
So how do the physicians generally feel about this in town?
They love it.
Really? I've never heard of it before.
I can do 10 of those to have one person sitting in my chair for, you know, 20 minutes or 30 minutes. It's much more efficient. So patients do that all the time. They send things over the phone or to your email or whatnot, and it's certain things you can diagnose very easily, certain things you cannot. So those are people that'll still have to go have an insurance visit. But it's much more cost-effective for minor care than what we're doing now. It's the wave of the future. There's no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the wave of everything pretty soon. So it's just more efficient. But unfortunately, we don't have much of a choice. Insurance is killing us, and we don't get to choose that, unfortunately, because it shouldn't be fair that our rates go up because we utilize a service that we're already paying for. But that's just the way insurance works. We do it every day, and that's just the reality of our society right now. So until we can find a remedy for this, we have to stop the bleeding, because we're bleeding from the City of Longview. We cannot afford what we have, and it's killing us. So we have to find ways, and I appreciate you all being innovative enough to look into this, because we must find, we want to take care of our employees, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens to make sure we're doing everything we can to provide the best service we can, but at a reasonable cost. We have to be conscious of that. And unfortunately, the insurance companies win at this most of the time. That's just the way it is.
I've got a couple of questions. On the HSA, really, that doesn't save the city any money unless you go with the higher deductibles like you're talking about, which I assume would start next year, next October. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would be October 1st of 2018 when we would put that in place to curb trend for the upcoming year.
So what kind of, what are you visualizing for a high deductible?
So a high deductible means anything over $2,700 is defined by the IRS times two for a family. Typically, that, the out-of-pocket maximum that's associated with that is about double the deductible. So it's gonna be close to $6,000 on an out-of-pocket basis, maybe a little bit higher. We have to find the appropriate deductible and out-of-pocket levels to create savings for the city, the employee, and enough funding to the HSA account for the employee and the city as well to make it work. Overall, we're trying to curb long-term trend with this. Under the HSA account style structure, trends are in the low single digits, between 3% and 4%. When you compare it to the PPO, traditional PPO approach, those are the trends where you're upwards of 8% of trends. So we're trying to get employees into these accounts to, short and long term, decrease the trend that's being applied to the city right now through the claims.
So the city will be adding money to the HSA? They'll be doing matching funds or something like that?
No matching funds. That's not allowed by the IRS rules, but we will be putting an amount into that account tax-preferred, and there will be hopefully savings in the premium dollars from the employee's perspective, where they could put that savings, a portion of that savings, into the account. Also, that'd be alongside the traditional PPO plan we have today. So if they move from the PPO plan to the HSA, that's also savings. So that could be a pretty large amount on their end.
So they'll have the PPO plan they can still use if they want, but they'll have to pay the extra for that?
They'll have to pay extra for that. That's correct.
So on the HSA account, where does the money come from to pay for these bills first? Does it come from them, or does it come from the city?
So when a claim comes through, what will happen is whatever the employee's responsibility of that claim is, say they have a deductible applies, the employee can take a debit card that goes to their HSA account and pay that through their HSA account. So the money, as soon as the money exchanges hands from the city to the HSA, that contribution, it becomes the employee's. There's, the city has no access to that money anymore. So it's truly the employee's money. They're supposed, hopefully, they're utilizing that on the medical expenses that are coming in. Or if they're not having medical expenses, they're just saving and allowing it to roll over year over year.
So what happens if they don't pay for that bill?
So if they don't, so if they don't pay for that bill, ultimately, the provider will come after them for payment. That's gonna be required.
Okay. You had, you talked about a prescription...
We're self-employed.
I get it.
A prescription drug program.
It's coming.
You talked about a prescription drug program, and it ramps up depending on, you know, you make sure they don't get too many pills and all that. And you talked about how much that was saving around the country, but we're not doing that?
Right.
So, well, let me just ask you. I mean, we're paying you guys quite a bit, I assume, to be our consultants. Why didn't we start that sooner?
We, well, last year, when we went through the process, we identified these issues as potential implementation issues for the future, and it was decided not to do, the committee decided not to do that last year. It'd be something we'd do this year. We made the substantial change over to UMR as, it was a very large change because of where you had been with the other carrier for many, many years. So we wanted to do this in steps instead of pulling the Band-Aid off all at once.
And then why, you know, we're gonna do the, you're saying we're going to do the dependent audit. Is that the same thing? Why didn't we do that before?
Same, same thing. It was gonna be a multi-year strategy.
So we didn't rip off the Band-Aid, but now we're having to put another million and a half dollars into the, into pay for all the insurance expenses.
Right. And what, if we looked at the long term, just not the past six months, if we looked at 24 months of claims experience, this large increases here was unexpected. It was truly just utilization that we couldn't have predicted in the past. We've taken steps, moving to UMR is actually saving the city about 4% on the discounted discounts that we're receiving prior, compared to the Verity. So Verity network we had before, so that in itself saved a lot of money that could have been also paid out with these large claims. So there's a lot of things that we've done. It's just we're trying to do it incrementally, but because this year, we're faced with the issue we're facing with, it's, there's gonna have to be a ramped-up implementation process, which ultimately is going to be a tough pill to swallow for committee as well as the employees, unfortunately.
I would say it's probably also a reason that we've done it in phases is because the employees are not going to be happy about the changes that are being made.
Mine weren't either.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, but it's a reality. I mean, unfortunately, no one is, no one likes it, but we...
Is this year's budget going to reflect this? We've been going off of previous budgets from the previous year. Are we going up on it this year?
Sure. Okay. And I've got a couple of comments on the fund balance to draw down, if I may. We have, in the past, bitten into the fund balance for capital items, one-time expenses. I don't think any of us like doing what we're being asked to do tonight, to dip into our fund balance by a million and a half for a recurring operating expense. So I asked staff today what this action might do to the end of this fiscal year fund balance, given the expenses and revenues we have, and would we be in danger of falling close to our minimum fund balance, especially in the general fund? Even after this action, assuming we do it, our general fund balance is gonna be $14 million, which is 21% of our expenses. And you might recall, our minimum is 10%. So even after this, we're still going to have twice as much fund balance in the general fund that our minimum calls for. I'm not happy about it, but I'm comfortable with it.
I just would like to comment and say those all sound like very good changes to be addressed, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I think those are positive things that need to happen, and I know that they will not be an easy pill to swallow. I wish that we could not make some of those changes, but we can't transfer 1.5 million into general operating all the time. We do have to prepare for that to be an increased general operating expense. So thanks for the work, and I know that committee is faced with a lot of backlash for those things. So we appreciate those suggestions and recommendations moving forward.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Isaiah, community interest. Mr. Moore?
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Snotty?
Yes. I just wanted to mention that Congressman John Lewis was in town a couple of weeks ago, and it was exciting to be in the company of a man who had actually marched with Dr. King. He was here to support one of Longview natives, Jasmine Wack, who's running for state representative in the state of Georgia. So it was an exciting time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Mr. Wade?
Just a reminder of my town hall meeting, May 3rd. I'm sure there'll be advertising, I think we mentioned, placing it in the newspaper. There it is there. They're good. We didn't even plan this. Thursday, May 3rd, 6:00 p.m., Hudson Prep Elementary School with Ms. Shan Bauer. So we'd love for everyone to attend, in and outside of District 3. We all know that District 3 is one of the districts where, you know, there's a lot of work that we need to do there, and this is one way to get a lot of great input. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Shihara?
Just that, I would again like to invite you to the Wine Festival. We are officially sold out of VIP tickets, but we would love for you to attend. You can still come and purchase a general admission ticket online or at the event. We do expect it to be fairly full, so come early. You will park at the Longview Fairgrounds and shuttle over to the green, but it's gonna be beautiful weather, beautiful day, great cause, so come out and join us.
Does the VIP ticket mean you get to drink more wine than the regular ticket?
It's unlimited, Andy. It's unlimited. But you, yes, sold out.
Wow. No wonder it's sold out. Okay, Mr. Wright?
I wanted to mention a man who'd had a big impact on a lot of the kids that have gone through the Spring Hill School system. He passed away this past week, and Raymond Prince had done a lot for our community, and we're real sorry to see that happen.
Thanks for mentioning that, David. He's a wonderful man. Yes, be very missed. Thank you, sir. Mr. Pirtle?
Nothing.
Mr. Bonds?
Okay. Apply now to serve on boards and commissions. City council will soon make selections on volunteers to serve on various advisory boards. Please apply by the end of April. Apply in person at City Hall or online at longviewtexas.gov/boards. Once again, this is very important. This is where you get a chance to provide expertise that you might have in an area that we need your help on. So don't hesitate to get out there and put yourself out there and help our community become a better community. Rec Day at the Park will be Saturday, May 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Lear Park Kids View Playground. This free event is hosted by the Parks Department. It will include games, food trucks, inflatables, face painting, prizes, and more. Summer Reading Club registration begins May 1st. Libraries rock. This is the theme of the Longview Public Library Summer Reading Club with free educational and fun activities all summer long. Learn more at Texas, longviewtexas.gov/SRC. Learn more at Texas, longviewtexas.gov/SRC. Share your photos by April 30th. The City of Longview is investing, inviting residents to, once again, submit photos of life in Longview in East Texas. Photos submitted by April 30th will be considered for prizes. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov/fotos. Upcoming events. There are a ton of events taking place all over the next couple of weeks. Normally, we just mention a few, but the list is just too big this time. Our, our calendar is packed, and you know what? That is so great for Longview because it gives people a reason to want to come here and have something to do at all times, but we are really doing a lot of things downtown live. If you didn't go last weekend, oh my goodness, what a great night it was. That, that has become a really, a real place to go and, and relax, enjoy, and see what the city has done. And, and people are out there, just, you see people with their dogs, their children, their lawn chairs, that, you know, the food trucks are there. It, it's just a great place to be. If you haven't done it, you need to go try that out, because it's really, and the bands are great. It's fantastic entertainment and, and good fellowship. Historic Longview Farmers Market is open every Saturday. Longview Ballet's Aladdin is on April 27th to 28th. Longview Wine Festival, April 28th. Longview Health and Health Humanities Raising the Roof is April 28th. What? Did I mess it up? Okay, good. And that, those are always fun events. That Raising the Roof is, is a blast. All the, you know, April has had something every single weekend, at least one activity or two, sometimes three, and there's been four on certain weekends. And if you weren't there last weekend, the rodeo was fantastic. The Rodeo Club did a great job. Bad weather Saturday night, but Friday night was as packed as I've ever seen the rodeo arena on a Friday night. It's a great opportunity to go out there and enjoy our facility and see those cowboys and cowgirls and fellowship with people. It was a great time, so I'm glad people got to enjoy it. Saturday was a little bit messy, but it was still a, a good weekend. Weekend of May the 5th and 6th, East Texas Parade of Homes, May 4th through the 13th. Longview Arboretum's Flower Power 5K that we already have up there on May the 5th. Louie's on the Plaza featuring Coco, May the 5th. Big Bath Finanza, May the 5th. Learn about all these and many more at visitlongviewtexas.com. Thank you all for putting all those together, Sean. I appreciate you all and getting everybody out there. Okay, survey time. The City's Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee has been meeting for quite some time to review projects that could potentially be put forth in a bond package this fall. These projects fall into really three categories. Please rank by order of priority what you think are the most important for our city. Want to be the most important, they're gonna be the least important. Public safety, parks recreation, transportations and roads. And our community responded in a huge way, and I'm very pleased that they are taking the time to respond. Public safety, number one. 71% feel public safety is very important in this deal. Second was parks and rec, uh, second was transportation, I'm sorry, 20%. Parks and rec, third, 10%. So people are at least starting to think about this. This is gonna be a very important task for us to undertake, to determine how this shall proceed and, and what the effects of this will be on our community. And we'll be bringing more of that to you all as, as these weeks and months come by, but it's time to start thinking about this from a citywide standpoint, because this will affect us all, no matter what age you are, it will affect everybody. So let's start putting our thinking cap on and talking to your council representatives, talking to people on these committees, and getting some input in, and let us, let us hear what you have to say, because we, we are listening. We are up here, we are all ears on this, on this proposed bond package. Okay, here's my fun question. I bet none of y'all got this right. I ought to ask each one of y'all to tell me what you did, but I'm not gonna do that. What should you put on your yard right now? A pre-emergent herbicide, a selective herbicide, a post-emergent herbicide, or I don't even know what you're talking about? Yeah, that was 40, 47% said that. 47% of you all said that. Really? 23% said pre-emergent, 20% said selective herbicide, and 10% said a post-emergent herbicide. Well, the correct answer is, okay, let me go through it. Pre-emergent, too late. You gotta put that on for the dogwoods blooming. If the dogs have bloomed, your pre-emergent is too late. Selective herbicide can be put on really any time, because it selectively kills weeds and not your grass. You can do it really any time you want to. Now's a great time to put on a post-emergent herbicide, because they've already multiplied, what do you wanna call it, germinated. So the real answer would be post-emergent herbicide, if you were really wanting to do something. So just thought y'all might wanna, y'all didn't know I was a gardener, but I am. I'm a farmer, okay? I'm a farmer. So that's pretty much it for tonight. I appreciate y'all being here, so until next time, this meeting will be adjourned.